We are recording.
All right, thank you very much. I'll make a couple of announcements, but first off, the call to order. Before we do anything, if we can have a roll call, please.
Alderman Cone. Alderman Ryan.
Present.
Commissioner Benton.
Present.
Commissioner Boaz.
Present.
Commissioner Bradley.
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes. Commissioner Garmendia.
Present.
Present.
Commissioner Keong.
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Present.
Is he nodding or anything?
Okay. And you have a quorum of, I'm sorry, Chair Strather.
I'm present, thank you. Thanks, Michelle. First off, let me wish everybody a happy new year. Welcome back. I would like to introduce first Commissioner Rhodes, who is new on the commission. Welcome to the panel, welcome to the mission, sir. If I'm correct, you are representing the controllers designate. If that is correct.
That is correct.
Very good. Thank you for your participation as City and Democracies, as we can tell. Run best when it is engaged and all are active. I'm very pleased to say that we have all but one commissioner who's on today, so that's a good thing. The second thing for people that are listening, there is going to be a public hearing. At that, and I'm going to make this announcement probably again once or twice more. At the time of the public hearing, I'll call for an open public hearing, will then designate the appropriate people as needed to speak if you have something. If you want to speak, we'll ask at that time that you start placing your name in the chat. The staff at the Planning Commission, at the commission will start queuing those up for individual calls and we'll dictate, we'll deal with that at that moment. Each individual would get a two-minute maximum to speak. And I want to say this very clearly, I'm very respectful of everybody's opinion, but two minutes maximum. Respect to everybody's time. So that's what we'll do at the appropriate time for public hearing. It will then be closed and then I'll call for commissioners to come up for any questions at that point. So there is going to be a public hearing, it was posted 15 days prior to and met all the requirements as needed. With that said, and the call to order roll call, the next thing is a call, is a a motion for approval of the minutes, all commissioners should have received their packet. If you were not attended, obviously you cannot vote a positive, but you can abstain and if you were present, you can make your vote either way. So with that call, motion to approve the minutes.
So moved by Commissioner Keong.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Please, and when you, and commissioners, please remember if you speak, please say your name so that they can have it for the recording also.
Commissioner Garmendia seconds.
Thank you. Call for vote.
Alderman Cone. Alderman Ryan.
Aye.
Commissioner Benton.
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes cannot place a vote or cannot close the vote on minutes.
Commissioner Garmendia.
Aye.
Commissioner Keong.
Aye.
Chair Strather.
Aye.
And the motion passes with seven voting aye and one extension.
Thank you very much. The minutes are approved. With that, we have three items that will be presented to us. The first one is going to be presented by, and I just had the list in front of me. And of course, it didn't go as well as I thought. The first one is Alexa. Number 23 ZTX Alexa, it's all yours at this point.
So, good evening, planning commissioners and all those that are on the call. My name's Alexa Seda and I am a senior planner with the city's planning and urban design agency. So I'll just, there we go, there's the slide. So the first action item on the agenda for your review is a zoning text change to amend chapter 26.7 of the zoning code related to medical marijuana uses to an all-encompassing marijuana uses. As a result, excuse me, as a recently passed Missouri state constitutional amendment number three, which legalizes the sale of recreational marijuana. What you see here on the slide are the new terms related to recreational marijuana uses that will be included in our zoning text amendment. Next slide, please. So under this proposed zoning text amendment, the definition related to the terms that were on the first slide will be housed under the umbrella of marijuana facilities. Therefore, comprehensive, medical and micro business facility types will be regulated in the same manner. So quickly, under each type of facility are what they can do. So for instance, a comprehensive medical or wholesale dispensary can, as you see there at the bottom quadrant, is acquire, process, package, store on-site or off-site, sell, transport to or from, and deliver marijuana. And also sell marijuana infused products and drug paraphernalia used to administer marijuana. So on this side, or also, I would just want to let you all know that you can find the fully defined terms in exhibit B of your resolution packet under section two, 26.7, 0.010, under purpose. So if you want to read more into the definitions. Slide three, which is here. Given that the city already regulates medical marijuana as of 2019 and zoning has not had any compliance issues regulating those uses, recreational marijuana facilities will be regulated in the same manner. The columns that list the zoning districts are the current manner in which medical marijuana facilities are regulated. The text that you see in blue on your screen are where the new definitions related to recreational uses will fall. Therefore, a comprehensive marijuana cultivation and a micro business wholesale facility will be regulated as the same as a medical marijuana cultivation facility and so forth. So I kind of will linger here for a second or two, so you guys can see where the definitions are. And so we have cultivation facility, comprehensive marijuana infused products manufacturing facilities will be alongside with medical marijuana infused products manufacturing facility. We have marijuana testing facility. And then the comprehensive marijuana dispensary and micro business dispensary facilities will be regulated the same way as a medical marijuana dispensary facility. And then we have the term marijuana facility, so any of those things that deal with marijuana but aren't necessarily the other uses that you see on the screen like cultivation or dispensary fall into the other category. Next slide, please. So this slide is just a refresher as to the regulation and site requirements for the now marijuana facilities, which again will encompass comprehensive, which is related to recreational, medical marijuana and the micro business. So in the first column, all medical marijuana facilities need to have what you see on the screen, they have to have a security cameras. They have to make sure that there's exterior building lighting. And that there's no public view inside of the buildings, there are nuisance-related regulations. And also, they have to follow any regulations that the state also has. Then we have some nuances, some extra stipulations for those facilities that are cultivation or manufacturing, so for those sort of facilities that have to have a armed security on-site 24 hours. Have to have an order mitigation system. You can see what's on the testing, also have to have armed security and signage. And then for dispensary facilities, you can see that there are more stipulations such as these facilities need to have the appropriate signage in their buildings to say what kind of ID someone needs in order to purchase marijuana. That talks more about hours of operation. And there's also other sign-related regulations and all of those can be found again in the exhibit B of your packet of your resolution packet for this zoning text amendment. That talks more in depth about those requirements. This was just to give you that refresher. So on, okay, great. On this slide, we have displayed a southeast section of the city, so this is the Benson Park West, we have a little bit of Graboy Park. Somewhat of Marine Village, just to kind of situate you. The long pink line is Graboy. Just to picture where we are. And on this slide, the colors that you see on the map are those designated for our strategic land use categories. And the parcels that are outlined in black are those that are zone F through L, which would permit by condition or by rate the marijuana facilities. What this map shows is that marijuana facilities are permitted mainly in our commercial areas, so like neighborhood commercials, that pink color. Business industrial preservation or business industrial development, which is that gray shade or the dark gray as well. And then also in the specialty mixed use areas, which are appropriate land uses for marijuana facilities. Next slide. And so after review of state amendment three and the current manner in which medical marijuana is already regulated in our city, staff finds that the proposed amendment is compliant with the strategic land use plan and therefore recommends approval.
Thank you, Alexa, I appreciate that. As I mentioned, there is a public hearing to this, all postings happened appropriately 15 days prior to. If you're interested in making a public comment prior to opening, I would ask that you in the chat identify who you are by name. Once I identify and call you, you'll then have two minutes at that point to state your question or your comment. We are always respectful and considerate of those on, no matter which side or issue you may have. At this point, from the commission, I'll entertain a motion to have an open, to open the public hearing.
So moved Bradley.
Second Benton.
Been moved by Commissioner Bradley, second by Commissioner Benton, call for vote to open the public hearing.
Alderman Cone. Alderman Ryan.
Alderman Cone is aye. And Ryan's aye.
Commissioner Benton.
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Garmendia.
Aye.
Commissioner Keong.
Aye.
Chair Strather.
Aye.
Motion passes with our present voting aye.
Thank you very much. With that, the public hearing is open. I invite anyone at this point to place your name in the chat if for public hearing. I have, this is my first call, I see no names. Is that correct, staff?
No names thus far, Chair.
This is my second call, I see no names. This is my third call, I see no names in the chat to vet for public hearing. With that, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved Bradley.
Second Cone, previous role.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bradley, second by Commissioner Cone for, and call for previous role, hearing no objections. The public hearing is closed at that point, thank you for those that did or did not want to. We now entertain questions from the commissioners. As you understand, and most are familiar, so Alderman Cone, any questions at this point?
No questions.
Thank you. Alderman Ryan, any questions at this point?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Benton, any questions at this point?
Couple of questions. Could just remind me, please, PDA staff. It says in the document that the state has provided that unless allowed by local government, no new medical or comprehensive marijuana facilities should be located within 1,000 feet of schools or churches. Is this something, I'm trying to remember that we did allow or did not allow or altered in some way?
Based off the 2019, we opted out of that. And I also forgot to mention that we do have John Payne on the line, who's the consultant that worked on state amendment three, and we also have the zoning officer who can answer any additional questions. But that is, we have opted out of that.
If I'm, that does ring a bell, and if I'm remembering correctly, it was because there are so many churches in the city that it would effectively.
Commissioner Benton, if I could jump in for just a second here, I know the the Board of Aldermen passed, I believe it was board bill two. It was Alderman Corders bill, which reduced that limit down to zero feet.
Got it.
So that, as you mentioned, there were a lot of concerns about the number of schools and churches and in order to maximize revenue, that's what the Board of Aldermen saw. Thank you.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Okay. Second question is, it's been in the news fairly recently that there's been a lot of break-ins in dispensaries or smashing grabs. And I see that there is not a requirement to have armed security as part of dispensaries, as part of this zoning amendment. Has that been discussed at all and whether by staff or anyone on if that should be included in this zoning change?
I will defer to the rest of the team and I also had seen Mary's hand up, so she might be able to answer that.
Thanks, Alexa. My hand was up in regard to the location requirements. When we worked on the medical marijuana, we chose not to have the location requirements because of how densely populated the city is and how many churches and how many schools, so that's exactly right, and that's why we chose not to do that. Um, I'm not aware of any break-ins in any dispensaries in the city. And the staff did not discuss the requirement of having an armed guard there 24 hours a day. It is not a requirement of the state statute. It's certainly open for discussion.
I'm just curious, I'm not sure that's a discussion that the planning commission should be having, maybe that's a discussion that happens at the Board of Aldermen, but was just curious if that's been talked about since it is a part of the actual zoning text. My last question has to do with signage on, trying to yes, on page 10 on the actual draft bill. Line five, it says the facility shall not have a sign unless it is a medical marijuana dispensary. Is that supposed to read comprehensive marijuana dispensaries, are we prohibiting non-medical dispensaries?
I think our intention was to treat everybody the same, so perhaps we just forgot to remove a medical out of there. Um, I can tell you that in our discussions with people in the industry, everyone except for the dispensaries did not want a sign. They didn't want people to know where they were.
Right, now I understand that totally. Just wanted, seemed curious to me that you would let medical dispensaries have it, but potentially prohibit.
Yeah, that was not.
Recreational facilities.
And for the record, and for the record, the respondent is Mary Hart Burton, just so the recording knows, thank you.
Understood. All right, no further questions, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benton. Commissioner Boaz.
No questions.
Commissioner Bradley.
No questions.
Commissioner Rhodes.
No questions.
Commissioner Garmendia.
No questions.
Commissioner Keong.
No question.
Chair has no questions at that point. With that, if Alexa, if you would just go over the staff's recommendation one more time, please.
So given the, how we currently regulate medical marijuana uses and review of Missouri state amendment number three or constitutional amendment number three, staff has found that the proposed amendment is in compliance with the strategic land use plan and therefore recommends approval.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve with the condition that all dispensaries in regards to signage are treated the same.
Second, Commissioner Boaz.
It's been moved by Commissioner Commissioner Benton, second by Commissioner Boaz, call for vote.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Ryan.
Aye.
Commissioner Benton.
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Garmendia.
Aye.
Commissioner Keong.
Aye.
Chair Strather.
Aye.
And the motion passes with our present voting aye.
All right, thank you very much. I will talk about, a little bit about that thing that said testing sites, we'll talk about that offline. Want to be sure we're talking about the same testing. With that, the next item, I think Andrea will be presenting.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, I'm Andrea, I'm a senior planner with the city of St. Louis.
Can you pull the mic down just a little bit for us?
Is that better?
There you go, thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, tonight, I'm presenting a chapter 99 blighting study and redevelopment plan for 909 and also 901 Chestnut is on, both addresses are in the documents associated with this plan, but it, both addresses are contained within the site, just for clarity. Okay, great. So this plan covers one block totaling 1.9 acres in the downtown neighborhood. Located between North Ninth Street, North Tenth Street and with Pine Street as the northern boundary and Chestnut Street as the southern boundary. And it's also within the adopted design downtown St. Louis neighborhood plan area. This next. Okay, the site is, contains a vacant 44-story, 1.4 million square foot office building. This building was built in 1986 and is the largest office building in the state of Missouri. And therefore also the largest vacant building. Largest vacant office building. Okay. This site was featured in the design downtown neighborhood plan adopted in 2020 along with the railway exchange site, which the planning commission approved a blighting and redevelopment plan for in June of 2022. Next. And the design downtown neighborhood plan proposes improvements for street frontages to make more welcoming and walkable corridors. Next. And this site sits at the intersection of several critical corridors identified in the plan. For improvement. Next. Okay. The primary objectives of this plan are to eliminate blight and facilitate the redevelopment of the site into productive mixed uses. SLDC staff recommends the project be supported by up to 15 years of tax abatement. The developer, Advantus Development Group proposes to renovate the existing building into 306 apartments, 300 hotel rooms, 288,000 square feet of office space and 37,000 square feet of retail. Negotiations regarding affordable housing are in process. And I think Zach Wilson from SLDC and Douglas Rasmussen and Shayla Meehan and consultants from Steadfast City representing the developer are here to answer questions. Next. Okay, those was a little out of order, but the site is in a specialty mixed use area of the strategic land use plan. Next. Okay. And let me just say this first, the proposed blighting and redevelopment plan is in conformity with the strategic land use plan and the design downtown St. Louis neighborhood planned and therefore, PDA staff recommends approval of the proposed blighting and redevelopment plan. Now we can have questions.
Thank you, Andrea. You mentioned there were some representatives online. I would ask that the senior rep, if there's anything that that person would like to state prior to questions from the commission that they identify themselves and speak on their project.
Thanks, Commissioner. I'm Doug Rasmussen, I'm the CEO and founder of Steadfast City. We're a consulting firm based in St. Louis and on Cherokee Street. And Andrea did a nice job of summarizing the project, obviously we're we're excited to be part of what we feel is a transformational redevelopment in a, in a building that you know, is one that while challenging, also presents great opportunity for downtown, so look forward to questions from the commissioners. And I also have my colleagues Shayla Meehan and Sarah Scrimner on the line.
Okay, what we'll do for everybody's understanding, I will ask the commissioners in a sequence if they have any questions. And at that point, Douglas, I'll allow you to identify who should answer that question best. So I'll begin with Alderman Cone, if he has any questions.
Oh, I have a few. So Doug, thank you for your interest in the building. You know, obviously having a million square foot of office space in the middle of downtown bacon is not a good thing. So I've been intrigued with the kind of repurposing of the building for residential and all of that, but I realized that that becomes a pretty costly situation when you're talking about rerunning. Basically, a gut renovation and running plumbing, electrical and all of that, that's not necessarily in there for an off or for residential. Because office spaces don't really require a bathroom for every cubicle. Have there been any type of studies done, like market studies in terms of demand for this? And do you have any folks that are lined up to lease occupy the, you know, non-residential components of this project?
Yes, yeah, thank you, Alderman, it's a great question. So our client did hire Jones Lang LaSalle and actually they hired Jones Lang LaSalle's National Group to look at this as well as obviously got some input from folks locally. And you know, the, the current program of the building initially, actually, we were, we were start, we were thinking there would be more than 300 units, but the, the study, obviously, we wanted to, we had similar similar, you know, thoughts that you have, right, in terms of you know, how much of this gets programmed for residential office, retail, hospitality and that informed, you know, what eventually became the current program, which is a 300, 306 units as opposed to at one time, we were much earlier in the project, we were, we were actually thinking it might have even been, you know, about double that initially, so so that, that's how we came up with that. On the office side, we've hired Calliers International to be our brokerage team and you know, I think given the, the overall plan for this building, the location, the fact that the floor plates are pretty wide open, but also pretty flexible, you know, that you know, we're, we feel good about the number that we have, certainly. Certainly there is, you know, it's a little bit of a challenging environment in the office market now, but so that may tweak a little bit, you know, to base, based on market demand, but all of these were really developed with a lot of, a lot of background knowledge and thought.
And then from a residential perspective, are these apartments for rent or apartments for sale? And what's the breakdown of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, et cetera?
Yep, so there's, there's, there's 306 units, they are apartments for rent. The average unit size is, is about 1,400 square feet. And we're thinking that the rents on average would be about a dollar 60. We're still working on some of the floor plates in terms of you know, amount of units in, in, you know, each floor plate and whether they're one or two-bedroom, you know, one concept that we're we're, we're working on pretty intently is to have about 24 units in, in, in a floor and then of those, about eight would be two-bedroom. So still a little bit kind of in the, in the development phase. I might ask Shayla to maybe look up in our application if we've got the specific breakdown, I just don't have, I don't recall exactly the gross number, but that, that's kind of a you know, the high-level number or high-level concept around what we're thinking and then as was referenced, I believe, earlier. You know, we are working with Director Richardson and Mayor's Office and SLDC on affordable housing and so you know, we, we do a lot of work in the city, our firm does, and certainly we've been advising. advising our client on, on the public policy around, goals around that. So, so that'll inform the unit mix as well.
So am I hearing that there are no three bedroom or more units that are being discussed or planned?
Shayla, do you mind just pulling the model? I'm sorry, Alderman. I just don't, I didn't have that specific number available. I apologize.
Hi Doug, everyone. I, I do actually have the application of the SLD application we submitted and we did not, we were not asked the breakdown of the bedroom unit size breakout. So we, we actually don't have that in the document right now. I'll continue to look for that on, on file if we have anything that indicates what that breakout would look like. But as Doug mentioned, we are exploring a concept of 24 units where two, where I'm sorry, eight of those would be two bedroom.
So Alderman, I, I can check and get back to you, but my recollection is it's more of one and two beds.
Before recording, that was Shayla Meehan responding.
Hi, yes, I'm sorry. I forgot to introduce myself.
Any further questions, Commissioner Alderman? We'll come back to Alderman Cone. Alderman.
Chair, I'm sorry. I think someone muted me. I was asking the questions and anyway, I do have a few more.
Yeah, okay.
All right. So I, I, I just want to make a point of just saying this because I, I've said it before with other developers, Doug, but you know, we are in desperate need of three bedroom unit apartments in the city. And you know, we've got plenty of families that just don't have options in terms of where to live. And when you're talking also about like affordable housing, you know, we need affordable housing for families too. And not every family that has kids needs to be renting a house, right? Like some of them don't want to, some of them don't have the capacity to take care of homes. Some of them would probably rather be in a nice apartment building downtown or, you know, somewhere in the central corridor with close accessibility to transit and resources and, you know, et cetera. So I, I would very much push, nudge, if that's a kinder word for you all to look at the possibility of putting in some three bedroom units. Especially as you're having those discussions with the mayor's office and others around just the affordability component of the project. That being said as well, I'm curious. And I think this is probably more geared towards Zach and his team. This building was built in the 80s, right? Like that is not that long ago. Maybe it is for some, but I was alive then. So I'd like to think that it went. And so I, I'm curious, Zach, like just knowing what was happening in the city in the 80s. Was this project given blighting and tax abatement when it was initially built by Southwestern Bell at the time?
I was alive also, but I was at a very young age, but no, I'm now aware of what incentive package was offered to this building back then. So.
I, I'm just curious, you know, when we go through these blighting studies and, you know, inevitably, or what seems inevitably to be incentives. I think some context there as to whether or not this property was previously tax abated or previously blighted would be, or not the property itself. Or not the building itself, but the property itself was previously blighted because I mean, that part of town at one point was very densely populated with office and manufacturing facilities. And I'm sure in the 80s, you know, particularly with this proximity to the Gateway Mall, there were some buildings that were probably razed and erased and, you know, then, you know, probably offered some sort of incentive at that point in time. But I would be curious and interested to know what that was. And if that happened previously, prior to voting on this myself. Just because I think that that's an important data point for people to consider when they're evaluating these types of, you know, programs and whatnot. So I think I'll reserve the balance of my questions to allow the other commissioners the opportunity to ask some of their own. But I do think, you know, I mean, this is obviously something that's a very exciting and enticing project and it's been vacant for a while now with no major corporate users or commercial users, you know, in sight. So you know, very interested to, to see what we can do of it with it. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Cone. Alderman, Orion.
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Banton.
Two, two questions. One is, it seems that almost every article I read about this project and our building, it always, parking is always mentioned as a obstacle and hurdle. And especially downtown where some poor decisions in the past have been made regarding parking and parking structures. It always worries me when you have a project like this that needs parking and there are things around it, which I would like to not see become parking. So is there a strategy that you've, that you have yet in terms to you know, get parking for this project or, or strategies that might be mitigated?
Yeah, so we, our client has successfully secured long-term lease with some extension options on 500 spaces from AT&amp;T at, at an existing parking garage that's at the property or adjacent to the property. The, the building itself, we think there's an ability to get up to 100 additional spaces within the building. We do think that that's, while that's a significant number, it's not enough to park. Likely not enough to park the entire building. So we are scouting other locations nearby and prob- probably too early to say, yeah, Commissioner, kind of what, you know, exactly that is, just because they're in various discussions with owners and things like that. But, but the goal would be to obviously do something tasteful and, and something that not only supports downtown, but yeah, obviously is successful for the project and for the city.
Is demolition of any existing structures nearby in the discussion?
No, it isn't.
Okay. Second question is just in regards to the overall process. I'm curious on why we are hearing this right now. I also read that the proposed development team isn't thinking that they'd have site control or be have purchased the building until early of next year. And this, that's a whole year away. So I'm curious on why this is becoming, coming before us now. And if you could talk a little bit more on just the timeframe and of the project.
Yeah, so it's coming before us now because, you know, while we wish this weren't the case, the fact that it's a million four square feet, it's a vacant building and a you know, very, you know, kind of tough downtown development market in, in for, for office and, and just, this is a project that's, you know, was built as, as was said earlier, back in the 80s for a large office tenant. And now it's being, you know, re, sort of reimagined, you know, for the current current market here, you know, 40 some years later. You know, as we go to redevelop this, you know, the, the, the lending sources, the equity sources, you know, there, there's several components that all need to come together at the same time. And those include, you know, the, the project did get a federal historic tax credit designation. You know, again, in a perfect world, it wouldn't work this way, but you know, the numbers unfortunately on, on their own for a $300 million project don't work without, you know, some evidence of, of subsidy. And those are, those are just two major items that you know, based on the rents and the market and the redevelopment costs will be required for us to finance the rest of the building. So it's a sequence, you know, and, and I think obviously our, our client's goal is to work collaboratively with Samara Road and that's their, that's what they're doing, right? And they've laid out a a sequence where Advantus will be able to acquire the building. And, and we hope to do that by the end of this year.
Understood. I, and I am very supportive of, of this project, like, like Alderman Cone said, a million square feet in the middle of downtown is, is not a, is not a good thing. And I'm a big believer of investing in, in our downtown. I just, I do worry since the project and the details of the project are still somewhat vague and will likely change quite a bit. I worry about approving something so early and then removing that potential touch, touch point with this commission. And then the project changing significantly that could be, have a negative impact in downtown in some way. So I do worry about that a little bit, but I will pass the baton to my fellow commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Banton. Commissioner Boas.
I don't have any additional questions. What a complex project and an important site. I worked in downtown in the 80s. So I remember that building being a very, you know, a large contributing factor. And I'd like to see it back in that state again.
Okay, Commissioner Bradley.
Well, I would like to ask if there, as we're in the early stages of this project, have there been any discussions or considerations about utilizing the city's steam loop in the renovation of this building?
Commissioner, I, I'm aware of the steam loop. The only thing, the only thing I can answer that, I, I would probably defer to our client or their engineering team. I did ask early on and our firm's involvement about that. And I believe my answer that I received at that time was it was something for further study. So I think we're certainly open to that.
Yeah, the proximity of the existing loop is very close to the building. There are a number of customers in downtown on the loop as well as significant capacity of the steam generation plant. So I would ask hat in hand, if you guys would please consider that as a sustainable aspect of this building. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I, I think we're, we're looking for all of these types of ideas for us as part of the redevelopment. And I think certainly all the systems internally are shot, right? Being with the building being what it is, but that's a great reminder on the proximity of the loop.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradley. Commissioner Rhodes, any questions? You're muted, Commissioner Rhodes. Commissioner Rhodes, any questions?
Not at this time.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Gormelia.
Yes, question I have, since today's purpose is to prove a blighting study. Can we just have a little bit more discussion on the condition of the building? I'm not as aware of the whole history and how long it's been vacant. And I read a little bit of the description that was provided in the packet, but I would love a more comprehensive overview of the condition of the building.
Sure. So the, you know, the, we feel overall, you know, that it met the blight finding under, under the statute because of inadequate infrastructure and the unsafe conditions and the deteriorating site improvements. And then also the, the, an overall outmoded design of the building, not, you know, the, the likelihood of this retain that's used as a million four square feet of office is, is very low. The actual conditions that we discovered ourselves, so Joel Glasscock, who's a planner for our firm, is not on this call, but he, he did go out and visit the site and took pictures and, and helped provide the the blight study or worked with the planning department on the blight study. There were several boarded up and shout out windows on the north side of the building that are, that are visible. The about 75% of the building's air dampeners are, are not operational and the, the lack of maintenance and irregular occupancy and cease and operations has resolved and resulted in aged and defective and obsolete utility systems. The, all of those will need to be replaced. There's evidence of corrosion of all the pipes in the building. Cracks in the pipes, pipe burst, flood damage, significant flood damage in the building in multiple locations on multiple floors throughout the building due to, to that pipe infrastructure. And then where the flooding has occurred, there's also mold. So, so we'll have to remediate some toxic mold. The east cooling tower in the building is defective. There's a large hole in the side of the cooling tower. And then if you do a, that, that's more the building stuff. And you know, there's lots of roof leaks and things. If you go into the building now, I mean, you'll see water kind of everywhere, buckets catching things and stuff. And then outside, you know, there's deteriorate, evidence of deteriorate infrastructure on the outside. I mean, mostly, you know, pavement curb cuts, all the, you know, sidewalks, various things that you would see on the outside that are in disrepair from a building that's not been, you know, really maintained or occupied. You know, for several years.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Right. Commissioner Callen, please.
No questions for now. Thank you.
All right. I have a question. I want to kind of piggyback on what Alderman Cone said about affordable housing. There is a need for three bedrooms. And if I'm doing the math right here at a dollar 60 a square foot, you said your average apartment is 306. That means you're talking about a 22, 4, 22, 40 a month. That means the average salary has to be at least $47,000. That's not the person that's able to work at any of the restaurants in the neighborhood, work at some of the business in there. So I'm very curious about how do we sustain it staffing and people that want to live and work in the same neighborhood when they're having to pay, you know, over half, nearly half of the salary. Can you address some of that conversation?
Yeah, no, I, I think, Commissioner, we're, we're committed to this, making this work. I mean, we, we are, I appreciated Alderman Cone's you know, commentary, comments on the three bedroom. You know, I, I kind of learned, learned something new there. I hadn't really thought of it in that, that way. So that was helpful for me to think about it. And I certainly will bring, bring that back to our client. I think we are in, in many ways, we're at a good stage of this project because, you know, it is a little bit of a you know, of a, of a canvas that can still be painted, right? I mean, these are open floor plates. You know, we're, we're obviously committed to you know, the public policy goals of the city. We understand, you know, clearly what those are. We, we work closely with, with, you know, the city on various fronts. And so you know, I was, I was quoting, you know, just some preliminary numbers that we have as we, as we're going into this process. But again, I think, I think we're, we're in, about to enter into a much deeper, you know, conversation with Neil Richardson and, and team and others on, on how that looks and, and, you know, are, are, are open and supportive of that.
Yes, because I always have an issue that you should be able to live where you work. With that, I, there's no more questions from the chair. I would ask again if the, if Andrea, if you would review your recommendation, please.
The, the proposed blighting and redevelopment plan is in conformity with the Strategic Land Use Plan and the Design Downtown St. Louis Neighborhood Plan. And based on that, PDA recommends approval of the proposed blighting and redevelopment plan.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion from the commission.
Move your approval. Commissioner Boas.
Seconded, Gormelia.
It's been moved by Commissioner Boas, seconded by Commissioner Gormelia. Call for vote.
Alderman Cone.
I'm going to vote present just because I do, would like to see like previous blighting studies and things of that nature, but I'm supportive of the project, but I'm going to vote present. Thank you.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Commissioner Benton.
Abstain.
Commissioner Boas.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Gormelia. Commissioner Garmenya.
Aye.
Commissioner Keon.
Aye.
Chair Schrader.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Seven ayes and one abstention.
One abstention, one present.
And one present, I'm sorry.
And with that, I would challenge or charge the staff, if you could, be sure to respond. With an answer at the next meeting for Alderman Cone, simply on that question of taxes and the tax abatement. He spoke about his young age at the, at the birth of that building in eighty-six. I was probably on my third job out of school, but thanks Alderman for reminding me how old I am, Davis Winnie, you don't need to comment with that.
Mister Chairman, Mister Chairman, it's Don.
Yes, sir, Don.
I would like to just make the notation. That this as a redevelopment plan fortunately has an interested developer. In it, but it's been advanced and sent to us from LCR A and Zach Wilson is on the, on the. On the call on the Zoom and I just will bring up, yes, we'll research with Zach on getting that previous tax abatement information. And just encourage and remind Zach what President Bradley reminded about, we should in looking at redevelopment plans that are downtown. Encourage all those seeking redevelopment to check out the steam. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you, Don, with that, I have Tyler, but it looks like Jonathan.
I am Jonathan.
Yes, that's what I said, but I had Tyler written down.
My apologies, Chair, for that, air on that. Good evening, Commissioners and Chair Schrader, my name is Jonathan Roper, I am a CND city planning executive at Neighborhood Planning with the City of. St. Louis's Planning and Urban Design Agency and this evening I have the final blighting study and redevelopment plan for you this evening. Known as PDA zero zero four twenty-three RDM, this. Site takes us to a one point seven, one point seventeen acre site in the central western neighborhood. On the corner of North Kings Highway at Lindell Boulevard, the existing site is a surface parking lot. And the proposal is a thirty-story mixed-use building with around two hundred and ninety. Residential units, around fifteen hundred square feet of commercial space and roughly around three hundred and forty parking spaces, estimated project cost around a hundred and forty-five million. And the petitioner, AKA St. Louis Owner LLC, is also on the line here today. And the next slide, please, this evening it takes us, we, I'll take you first to the central west end and particularly on the street of Lindell Boulevard. The area of Kings Highway between Lindell Boulevard and sixty-four forty, where we first just take a look at this, the surrounding. Sites, starting on the left, we have the historic building, the Chase Park Plaza. Along with the recently developed, the Hundred Above the Park, formerly known as the Hundred Kings Highway, that's a thirty-six story building. A few more apartment buildings, including a sixteen, fifteen and a six-story building. And then we have the more medical complexes, the Barnes Jewish Hospital, which is ranked. Nationally ranked along with the St. Louis Children's Hospital and of course, Washington University's Medical Campus as well. Also around the site, we have Forest Park, so this planning commission adopted as recently as twenty. Two thousand and six, the Forest Park Master Plan. And this image here is one of the renderings of the Jefferson Pond, which is going under renovation. Along with a few of the projects that are following the master, the master plan and as you could see in this rendering, you could see the Kings Highway stretch. The hospitals on the right side to that new building, Hundred Above the Park and of course, the Chase Park Plaza and of course, the pretty birds in the background too. So that was a part of this plan and this, we look at leveraging what's going on over there on Kings Highway with park improvement and back and forth. So one does feed off the other, next slide, please. Also, I'll take you just a little bit north on Kings Highway as well, this is a site that was recently approved for a blighting and redevelopment study. At Kings Highway at McPherson, this was a reuse of a historic, or a historic building along with. It was kept the building, but it built on top of it as well. And I'll take it just to the site real quick, we have the existing parking lot as facing the Chase Park Plaza. And here's a few views of the parking lot as it is today, next slide. Also note, when this site is subject to the review of the Cultural Resources Office of the City of St. Louis, this site is within the Central West End. Certified Local Historic District, so the Cultural Resources Review ended, approved this. And there was workings with the neighborhood and cultural resources to redesign the buildings, even layout footprint. Where the view would actually be set back and more aligned with the buildings along Lindell Boulevard, next slide, please. Also, this site is subject to the Central West End's Form Based District. Where along Kings Highway, as you could see, here's a page out of that Form Based District, the property is along Kings Highway, there's a minimum height of six stories. And it, there is an image at the bottom left of the screen where it gives examples of what we're looking for this area, so. Multi-family or high rises would fit right in and on the left, on the right side, you could see part of what is being proposed next to a hundred on the park. That's a thirty-story building, next slide, please. The review also looks that conformity with the comprehensive plan of the city, the Strategic Land Use Plan, which is a supplement on that. And the area is designated as Specialty Mixed Use Area. Where it looks for, it's described as areas like downtown that a unique mix of uses be preserved and developed. So this being a thirty-story building would, you know, seeing the AT&amp;T building before here being around forty-four stories that this would fit in with that. Specialty Mixed Use category, next slide, please. And this is one of the images. From the development site that shows just on the proposed, what the proposed development. Plan would produce along with. The Hundred Above the Park on the right side and the Chase Park Plaza on the left. And can you get to the video real quick? And we'll come back right to this. And now we're going to give PDA, you know, New Year, so we're trying something new and we have a short video produced by PDA. For you, just to tour the site and the area of this. How about, you try to get the next. Close up the video, redo it and I'll talk about this. So we'll go quickly to the tax abatement portion of this, so the request for the proposal is. It's a, for ten years at seventy-five percent. The, in the tax abatement and Zach Wilson is here on the line along with the developer to talk more about this. But there were looking at just comparative projects that the commission has passed and the past, has passed. And looking at, are we ready, I'll come right back to the next slide. And this first slide starts with the site, as you could see, the site's a little faded and you can pause real quick. Go back just a tiny bit, you could see the site's a bit faded and the top, the parking lot to the top right. As you could kind of tell more so, it's a more active parking lot where there are lines and cars parked versus the subject site where it's really faded. And cracked as well, next slide, please, or, keep going, thank you very much. And then. We have the site, of course, again, at Hundred By the Park on the right and Chase Park Plaza on the left, you could even see the arch in the view on this side. And that's the proposed building again. And this, starting with the mansions along Lindell, you see the Forest Park View, Clayton. Even the, you see the Science Center. And then we hit Kings Highway where you have BJC Hospital, Wash U Medical, the apartments. And of course, the newly built Hundred Above the Park Building. And then the subject site, which is a parking lot and has been a parking lot since at least nineteen forties. You could actually see an image of the Chase Park Plaza, if you look on Google where that has been a parking lot for a very long time and then of course, the Chase Park Plaza. And this is the view, again, going to over Forest Park and you could even see Clayton in the background there, so. So in looking at just a few other properties around, we see that the property, let's starting with the top right, which is just. West of Midtown at Slough, new development, so a lot of those have had. Different tax abatements over the years, ten-year, fifteen years, the new Hundred Kings Highway or Hundred Above the Park had a fifteen-year tax abatement. The one recently. Approved that McPherson at Kings Highway had a ten-year at ninety percent, so this one, subject site is asking for a ten-year. Abatement at seventy-five percent only, next slide. And at this time, staff finds that, and, next slide, please. Yep, staff finds that the redevelopment, the, the blighting setting and redevelopment plan is, or the site is hereby declared blighted and the proposed redevelopment plan is in conformity with the strategic land use plans. Also, the redevelopment plan should not supersede the Preservation Board's, or the Cultural Resources Board Preservation Board's approval for that. I also note just on that end that there was also support by different neighborhood groups for that, including St. Regis and the Central Western, I believe, was the Development Review Committee on that as well. And that development and design of that and that staff, PDA staff recommends approval of the proposed redevelopment plan and we're here for questions or comments and the proposed developer and also. Zach Wilson with LCR A is on the board, on the call.
All right, thank you, Jonathan, the developer, if you would identify yourself and you have a moment to speak to your plan.
Hi, my name is Sam Koppler, I'm the president of Koppler Properties and along with Albion Residential, we're extremely excited. To present this to you, Mister Chairman and Commissioner, fellow commissioners. We're, you know, from my side, my family's been active in the central west end for over a hundred years. My great-grandfather developed the Chase Park Plaza as well as the Congress and Senate Departments of Union. So this project in particular, not only has been a long time coming, but this is a very personal and important project to us. We've been, we actually met with Albion and teamed up back in April of twenty twenty-one. And started this process and Andrew Yule is here representing Albion. What, what brought us together really was our commitment. To the importance of high-quality architecture, that's it, you know, that meets the demand of this particular site. And Albion also meets that commitment, if you see a lot of their projects around the Midwest. They deliver projects the highest quality and they're long-term investors, a lot of developers want to go into a project. And sell it upon, you know, completion and, and that's not what we're out to do. We are, like I said, been in this neighborhood for pretty much a century and intend to. To stay in it for the long haul, so with that, I'll let Andrew, he's on as well, as well as Paul Alessandro, the project architect. And we're here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, so what we will do, Sam, is I will, as I've done before, go through the commissioners and I will allow you to identify which part of your team. Will respond to that question appropriately and I'll always begin with Alderman Cone. Who's probably muted.
Mister Chair, can you please come back to me later?
Certainly, Alderman Ryan, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Banton.
Thank you, Chair, a couple of questions, I think this is an exciting project and it is one of the few. Parking lots left open for redevelopment in the central west end and I'm excited to see today as that neighborhood continues to get, to get more dense and, and fill up and hopefully. Soon we won't be needing blighting studies for, for properties, they'll just be able to happen on their, on their own, however. I'm curious, it, it is my understanding that this project currently in terms of its parking is a, as a one-to-one parking ratio as required by the zoning code, is that correct?
We are just over that.
Just over that, okay. And I'm, you know, structured parking takes up a, a lot of a project's budget, was there any discussion with the city or with the neighborhood in order to reduce that, in order to potentially reduce the amount of subsidy needed?
I, I think that's, it's a very fair and valid point. Unfortunately, like, if, if I could snap my fingers, I would love to not provide parking because it's a, it's a big loss leader. Unfortunately, it's a marketability issue where we need to provide this parking option for these residents, you know, given the. Positioning of the project, I imagine a lot of the renters are going to have one, maybe two cars. And we have to be able to provide that, anecdotally speaking, we used to own the York House directly across the street. And the parking for that was situated in the Argyle Garage, which is just due east of it, that was not within our control. And we lost a lot of potential renters due to that adverse, you know, parking situation. And so we were able to, to make the York House work, being just thirty-three units. But in a project of this scale, we have to make sure that we provide the needed parking, not only for the residents, but for their guests as well. So I think this is, is frankly, is tight as we're comfortable in getting it with the parking count.
Understood, I mean, the neighborhood is probably one of the, the most walkable areas in the entire city. Where, did you do a parking study to look at other properties nearby and are you charging for parking?
Yeah, absolutely, so I'll let Andrew touch on this because, you know, they have a lot of experience, not only in, in St. Louis. But also other Midwestern markets and, and he can touch on, you know, our thought process behind the parking count.
Thanks, Sam, Andrew Yule, for the record, with Albion Residential Partners on the development with Sam, can you guys hear me well? Okay, thank you and, you know, hello Chairman Alderman and Commissioners, I appreciate you guys hearing us, you know, to answer the, the question, we did perform a traffic study about. You know, it's been nearly eighteen months, two years ago and we were trying to drive that count down, you know, when the project first started, Commissioner, you're right, you know, it's. Cost of concrete has continued to rise and it's an empty cost that I think if we are all looking into the future ten or fifteen years out. I'm trying to think, what's my future use of that parking garage, because it's not going to be cars. So that's one of the first places that we do go to try to value engineer the project. The parking today is just slightly over one-to-one and the parking count did satisfy that. If you go to the neighborhood groups, I think you understand what you hear there too, the screaming and yelling at us that we don't have enough parking. And the compromises we have to make during those neighborhood groups to get to the Board of Adjustment to have a project with the letters of support needed. And I think we got to a fair balance, slightly over one-to-one ratio, we're just into the three hundred range at the building. And, you know, we are providing in that twenty-two public stalls, so there was some compromise there that the neighbors were saying for guests and neighbors. And if people wanted to go visit the retail that we'll have in the building, which is small, it'll only be fifteen hundred square feet. You know, that, and that circulation as well, so part of the first floor, how we're loading and dropping and driving through the site operates on that first floor and the raised podium then only goes three stories above grade.
Gotcha.
We are lining the rest of the parking garage on the front of Kings Highway with units and just maximizing it the best that we can.
No, I do appreciate that about the design, I, I think having that frontage of units on Kings Highway is, is a, is a great feature. My second question is just time, timeline, what, when are you expecting to have shovels in the ground?
Well, here we are in front of you two years later. Sam and I, Sam and I with a hundred percent confidence ran this project through the Board of Adjustment, through the neighborhood group meetings and to City Council with full approvals. Not asking for a tax abatement. And then the world went crazy. It took us a long time to get to this, there was a lot of. Reasons that we don't really necessarily need to speak about here, but we got to where we got to and interest rates went crazy and pricing and construction costs went crazy and from the first time we planned this project into early twenty twenty-one. Bosses have risen on us, ten to fifteen million dollars and even today, you know, we looked at the neighborhood and we understand the blight studies and. And even today, you know, we looked at the neighborhood and we understand the blight studies and we understand what everyone else, you know, has obtained around us. We are not even asking for the full, what our direct neighbor got just a few years ago. We even said, look, we understand this is a big ask. We understand that from the bottom of our hearts. And I didn't want to be in front of you guys by any means. I, I pride myself on being able to do this. And it's come to the point where the construction cost through several bidding processes from local general contractors to national general contractors. Every time we would go out for bid, the number would just keep going up and up and up. And it was nothing of the project of changing. It was just construction cost, materials delays, you know, the tightening of the logistics, you know, system of what was going on. And then on the other side, it was a pure 5 million, you know, three to $5 million hidden in the interest rate market from, you know, early 21, late 2021, at a 2.75% interest rate on a fixed rate loan to 7% interest rate on a $140 million deal. And things just kind of spiraled out of our control, which is, you know, why we're here today. So when would we want to put, long, long story, when would we want to put a shovel in the ground? You know, I, we already have a schematic into a design development set of drawings on this project that has been aggressively bid by general contractors. You know, as we have to still work ourselves through the full project, if we're lucky enough to have your support here, we still have to, still have a probably a few more weeks or months into the process of this whole, of the, of the, the tax abatement process and get back to the drawing board with the general contractor in the room to figure out how to get this thing going in the year, in the year 2023. My problem isn't necessarily that, that the equity side, we're fortunate enough to be able to competitively attract good equity. My worry is the banks today, still at this moment, haven't really released large amounts of debt for large scale projects. We do feel that loosening incoming, but we haven't had anyone's strong commitment that I could go tomorrow. So my, my goal would be Q4 of this year.
Great, thank you. And last quick and probably most important question is who at PDA has their drone license?
I was just saying, this is amazing. Like I need to get this guy working for us.
We, fortunately, when we first bought the drone, had a staff member that had a secret government clearance because he flew airplanes on the weekends out of Scott Air Force Base. But we've morphed the license to the head of the graphics department, Tim Canahan.
Nice. All right. Thank you. No further questions.
Commissioner Boas.
Well, the prior discussion has really addressed my concern because when I first looked at this, I just felt the tax abatement, particularly the, the discussion of the parking lot is blighted with just really strained. Don, I would love to have a presentation sometime on how the calculations are done for those tax abatements because I think it is hard for us without that background to really assess those. But that said, it really helped me understand why you needed it to, you know, the increasing costs, the parking structure, things along those lines. So I don't have a concern about that any longer. I'm excited to see the project go up, although I think you're going to block my view of Clayton. Good luck with the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Bradley.
No questions.
Okay, Commissioner Rhodes. Commissioner Rhodes.
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Garmedia.
Yes, thank you. My question, I guess, is for the planning department and just a little primer, as someone who's new to this commission, we're seeing kind of two polar opposite projects asking for blighting. One, a long empty giant building and then one, a parking lot. And so if I could just have a little bit more explanation about how a parking lot can be deemed blighted. Like I parked on this parking lot just a couple of years ago, so maybe I wasn't supposed to. But yeah, just some, I just, I just would like a little primer on how it, a parking lot is deemed blighted and, and no, nothing against the project itself, but I would like some discussion on that.
So I'll jump in. This is Don. Remember, actually what's coming to us is we're hearing from the developer, prospective development.
Yeah.
And its team quite clearly. But what is coming to us is coming to us from LCRA. And Zach Wilson is LCRA's representative here to bring to us a blighting study and redevelopment plan where they've already acted on approving the blighting and have put together a redevelopment plan. We now hear more specifics from the developer about what they want to do on the site, and that's very fortunate. Blighting in Missouri is such a thing that I'll be careful of my words. But there are sites in Clayton that get to be declared blighted. And why I sort of editorialize from that is this property vacant for such an extremely long time. But as the drone footage says, it's in a really complex, delightful area that's had rebirth. I'm glad the developer talked about their difficulties in putting all the pieces together to have such a spectacular thing. So in that light, we're recommending it be blighted. And as we mentioned, twofold is one, this is not a public hearing, but the immediate neighbor to the east, which is a series of condominiums all gathered together. Their board recommended and wrote to us how in earnest they felt this was a blighted property. The president of that association is one of the more knowledgeable attorneys in the city on blighting and redevelopment, as is one of the retired folks, one of the premier creators of a planning firm in town. So what I say is it does meet the definition of blight under the state law. And it is in the inner city. And I say we've gathered that information with respect to ask you to concur that it's blighted so they can build a product that they've described.
That suffice, Commissioner Garmedia?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Keong.
Thank you. I'm sorry if you all chatted about this, I missed it. Can you give us a better understanding of the unit, what that's looking out to be? And then if there's going to be any affordable units as well?
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I'm sorry I missed that. We, we have planned today in the building 293 apartments. There are a mixture of studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms and three bedrooms. We're in the range of about 72 bedroom apartments and six three bedrooms. I know one of the past commissioners, speaking about the last development, was speaking about larger units being needed in the marketplace. We also feel that, we feel an influx of empty nesters selling their homes, especially in this area. There's a lot of several large homes in the area that are historic of nature and take a lot of money to upkeep. And we're seeing more and more of that in, in neighborhoods like the West End District where those homeowners would like to, you know, not do as much landscape and maintenance throughout and look for that empty nester community. Overall, though, we try to keep the unit size fairly small because that portrays itself to a larger demographic of renters. So we have a large mix of studios and one bedrooms in the community as well. There's a lot more people who can pay 14, 15, $1,600 a month for rent than can pay $4,000 for rent. Part of the plan that we've agreed to is to create an affordable fund in Escrow for $1.3 million in lieu of this tax abatement. And that money would be used for city employees, teachers, firefighters, police officers, city employees that work on commissions and work in the city, clerks and administrative professionals, to use that money to tackle the higher costs of rent today in the growing environments and tap into that to rent an apartment. So, you know, we're working through those mechanics, but that's what we have talked about with, with, with the city and said, look, you know, we aren't asking for a total handout here. While we need the help, we're willing to go back and try to get some of these city officials in not just calling them affordable housing, but really letting them tap into the Escrow account. And we would draw the money into the building for them to rent there and pay for their rent until the 1.3 million dollars is exhausted. So what, one more comment here, you know, in concessions with the neighborhood groups, and thank you for speaking about how hard this has been to pull together. You know, during several meetings we've had with the neighbors, which included over 100 people in multiple meetings on this project in public, which we did garner large amounts of support and obviously some who were very, you know, not so happy with the project. We did make a concession to set this building back 40 feet off of the property line, which was one of the big drivers of really hurting us financially as well. We had to pull the building as a view corridor in the historic district. We were building the building out to what would be the build lot line of the sidewalk essentially off 10 feet. And then with our concession of the neighbors who said we were blocking views of the historic corridor in the district to the park, we pulled the building 40 feet back off of that, off of the street. So that had a, a large dramatic impose on what our building design was overall. I just wanted to mention that as it came to my memory through, through our meetings over the past few years of the concessions that got us to this point today.
Thank you. That's helpful and interesting to hear as well. No more questions for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Callan. I understand your mix of apartments, but can you give us what your studio size is and what you're, what you're averaging cost per square foot, please?
Yeah, absolutely, Chair. Our studios are going to start in the range of, you know, we will provide some micro units in this building under, which I consider under 400 square feet. But an average studio would be in that 500 square foot range. A one bedroom would be somewhere between 700 and 800 square feet. A two bedroom between 1,000 and 1,200 square feet and a three bedroom around 1,600 square feet. The rents per square foot, when we started this project two years ago, was slated to be just slightly over $3 a foot. And today, to make the project financially feasible, we're well into the $3.30 per square foot range, just in two years with the rising costs.
And based off of where the previous program we just heard, we recognize that that becomes almost, almost prohibitive for anybody that works in the West End. So, and I do, I appreciate this, this escrow fund. I, I think that's innovative. I think it's very good. But keep in mind, again, if you can't live in the West End, where do you, where, where do you live? And where do we put these players at work for the restaurants and the, and the Chase and, and the 100? So please keep that in mind because I think that is very, becomes very pernivative for that group and that entity. And Jonathan, a quick question for you. Do you know what the current rental rate, I mean, the percentage of rental is right now for the 100?
I'm sorry, I do not have that information.
It also received tax abatement. And Zach, if you would happen to know that, you could speak up. Meaning the percentage of rental.
Yeah, because I know they, I've seen several sites saying they're still looking for renters, if I'm not mistaken.
I, I'm not aware of the vacancy rate for 100 North, but the tax abatement for 100 North was 10 years at 90, five years at 50. That was done under a previous administration also.
Mr. Chairman, before you call for the vote, there's comments I'd like to make.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Alderman, I'll ask questions too.
Yes, please. I'm sorry, Commissioner Alderman Cohen, please.
Donna, do you want to make your comments first or?
No, 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 I want to yield to you.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I am curious, what is, what, and maybe I missed this, but what's the tax payment on the parking lot? And what will the tax payment be post incentive once this is developed?
So right now, the, the lot is throwing off about $60,000 annually in ad warrant taxes. At full, so are you asking with the, the abatement or fully assessed?
With, with the abatement.
I think Zach has that. Zach, you have that, right?
Yeah, we do. During the abatement period, the taxes will be over 40,000, $400,000 a year. After the abatement is burned off, it will be looking at over a million dollars.
So we would see an increase in taxes of roughly $320,000 per year from the site with the incentive?
Correct, at least, at least, yes.
Okay.
That's not taking into account personal property tax, earnings tax, sales tax, those type of things also.
Right, just, I'm just talking about the real estate taxes that are associated with itself. I, I mean, I think that that's good news for our city, for our schools, when we can, you know, take a vacant piece of land and, you know, increase its value to the point where it's actively contributing more taxes to our schools and to our city. I, I hear the argument around, you know, the parking lot being blighted. I guess I'm of the school that any parking lot in the city of St. Louis should be declared blighted because we should try to get rid of as many of them as possible and move to more public transit and, you know, multimodal transit where possible. And, you know, as we talk about, you know, a sustainable future and what that looks like, you know, I think that the direction that we should be in. But, you know, it, it is certainly a very interesting conversation to have around a lot that's been vacant for 1940s, almost, you know, 100 years now. And nothing being done there for that, for that period of time. So, you know, I, I'm really excited to see something happen at this, you know, intersection. I'm not thrilled about the prospect of a public subsidy in an area that is fairly well established. But, you know, understand the financials around it. And I, I do want to kind of point back to, I, I can't remember if it was the chair or someone else who kind of referenced, maybe it was Don, around the way the state of Missouri has our blighting definitions and how these are adhered to throughout the state and specifically what's in the St. Louis region. We need reform at the state level with respect to that blighting definition. It is absolutely way too vague and allows municipalities such as Clayton, which is, you know, just across the park from the site, to provide incentives that they don't need. And, you know, they don't have a need to attract businesses to Clayton. They don't have a need to develop, you know, these properties in Clayton that they can do through just regular market value. You know, tho- those areas have, I mean, it's just, it's incredible. DePere blighted the West County Center. And, I mean, it's literally in one of the most affluent communities out in the county as well. You know, these, these tools are certainly designed for places like our city, but should be very much used with scrutiny and sparingly throughout the, particularly the central corridor within our city, which is something, a position that I've taken for many, many years now. But I do think that it's important to emphasize that, you know, this would be a net gain for the city of $320,000 a year to, not just the city, but to our schools, to the libraries, to the community college and all the various taxing districts that, you know, benefit from an increase in our real estate taxes. And I'll, I'll just kind of use this as a point of personal privilege to also educate some folks that the city only receives 20% of that real estate tax. You know, the schools by far, you know, receive the majority with about 60%. And then the other 20% gets sprinkled around to, you know, places like our community colleges and public libraries and mental health board and other institutions. The Zoo Museum District also benefits from it. So, you know, this is certainly something that will help benefit all of those institutions through an increase in the property taxes that would be had at the site. So I do think that that's also, you know, an important point to take into consideration here.
But Mr. Chairman, if I could just.
So I want to verify that that's it for Alderman Cone. Is that it?
Yes, I mean, I, I would like, Zach, again, I would like to know if this property in the past has ever received any type of blighting or tax abatement. That would be very, I, I, I'm going to ask that of any property that comes to us that's in the central corridor. So, you know, I, I would very much appreciate some historical context here. I'll be voting present until I get that type of information. But, you know, I just, I think as we do have these deliberations. specifically as it pertains to blighting, because we're not here, it does, you know, as Don will, you know, always remind us, we're not here voting on the tax abatement. We're here to vote on the blighting of the property itself. But I am interested to know the historic, you know, context around, has this been blighted previously? So, and, and when that happened, why it happened would be very helpful when we're talking about these projects on the central corridor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Alderman Cohen. At that point, I recognize Don wrote.
Very astute of you to, Mr. Chairman, to go back and ask if Shane had any more, more to say. And in a way, I took a risk by sending the drone up because it is a parking lot at Far- along Forest Park that hasn't been developed. So it's a terrific site, meaning it's about time, is one way to put it. We have another parking lot over at the MetroLink stop of budding Forest Park that's now being developed and with tax abatement. One of the things that I want to say is Tracy, you'll remember in 2014, and Sam may remember it also because his father was president, his father's grandkids, your kids, when the president of the American Planning Association, the executive director of the American Planning Association, came to Euclid at a ceremony, the first one that year kicking off the Great Places in America Program designation that year started in St. Louis. And it was in 2014, and I just pulled the poster off the wall, designating the Central West End in particular, the rebirth of the Euclid corridor and this general area. And so three cheers for that to happen. And Sam, thanks for your family doing many things. Another thing that I'm going to say that I'm oddly thankful for is during the last few decades, there was at one time a thought, I'll put it that way. I don't know how much further it went, of putting a car wash on this corner. And that would just not sit well. So the legacy we've gotten to is this is being developed, and I want to praise the architects and the developers because, as they mentioned, they went forth and did a zoning only application to the building division and came also to the preservation board and cultural resources to propose their project and on this corner. That generated community input. It generated a hearing before the Board of Adjustment, which Meg Lestow from Planning and Urban Design provided some design review aspects for the Form Based Code to be presented for the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment actually held off their final decision while it also went through a formal process, but actually in a preliminary review with the architects at Cultural Resources itself because it is in a historic district. And what the feedback we get is the designers and the people behind this were very cooperative to listening to the concerns of the group and the professionals and the regulations. So much so that the building got moved to the south, I think about 30 feet, to be in compliance with both the regulations from the historic district, the concerns of the neighborhoods. And everybody participated, were very appreciative to the architects and their understanding. And we don't always get that. So again, it's a corner that was a parking lot. Thank God it didn't become a car wash. And today, you're voting on a boarding study and a redevelopment plan that includes a proposal for a building that actually they have vetted it through the city zoning process and cultural resources, and I appreciate them doing that. That's all I got.
That's all you got, Don. Thanks. With that, Jonathan, if you would review the recommendation of the staff, please.
Yes, Chair. That the property at 4974 Lyndle Boulevard, the redevelopment area, is here to be cleared blighted, and the proposed redevelopment plan is in conformity with the strategic land use plan. Also, just a conditional approval that we talked to LCRA to agree to set the redevelopment plan, just the language that the, anything said in a redevelopment plan and design does not supersede the zoning or the preservation board's approval and that PDA staff recommends approval of the proposed redevelopment plan.
Thank you very much, Jonathan. With that, I would approve, I'd entertain a motion from the commission. Move to approve, Banton.
Second, Boas.
It's been moved by Commissioner Banton, second by Commissioner Boas. Call for vote, please.
Alderman Cohen?
Present.
Alderman Ryan?
Pass.
Commissioner Banton?
Aye.
Commissioner Boas?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Garminia?
Aye.
What was that? Was that aye?
Yes, it's aye.
Commissioner Keong?
Aye.
Chair Strather?
Aye.
And Alderman Ryan?
No.
And the motion passes with seven, ayes, one present, and one nay.
Good. With that, you have, it moves forward as most do at that point, I believe, to the Board of Aldermen. So thank you very much, gentlemen, for your passion on that project. Anything, as Alderman Cohen said, that increases the tax base for the city, especially for schools, is critical. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, there are some delegated items. I guess, Jonathan, you're still standing there, so I'll turn it over to you at this point.
Thank you, Chair. There are three delegate items. Just one is a street vacation along the southwest corner at Cherokee and Jefferson Park. That's just a vacation event, I'm sorry, I said street vacation, alley vacation there for a commercial development that re-review and approved. The other two are chapter 99s. They're both under one acre. One is over a million. That is, and you have a one-page summary in your packet, which is for a redevelopment of a mixed-use building in Lakleeds Landing. And the second is a mixed-use building on Cherokee Street that's under one acre, under a million dollars, and that's all to report.
Very good. With that, I want to go back to something Commissioner Garminia said, and I think we are in a good point right now. Four out of the nine commissioners have been sitting, I'm sorry, was there any questions referenced to delegated items? I'm sorry. Okay. Four of the nine commissioners are new, and Don, your staff is fairly new. I think every now and then it might be time to set up a kind of a review platform of our purpose of some of the definitions that we use and a chance for commissioners to ask questions that may not be relevant to the particular item at, action item at the time because I think there's some, there's some good knowledge and conversation that can happen. You know, expertise like, like Alderman Cohen and, and Alderman Ryan and expertise like Jake Banton on, on that and things that, that Commissioner Bradley brings to the table. I think these things should be vetted out and at least heard from, by the commission, so we're well informed. I don't, we are not a rubber stamp. I'm very clear on that. But I do like, think it's a good time for us to kind of think about some renewal or refresher courses or conversations just for that purpose. So I would charge that to Jonathan and your, and the staff to come up with some kind of, I guess, presentation for that.
Sure. So two things. One, Jonathan is moving into the City Planning Executive for Neighborhood Planning. And Scott is not here today because he's at a Lincoln Institute for Land Policy, the group that I go to have been for the last 20 years on a specific thing where the, where Park Central, SLDC, PDA, and a couple of community groups won a grant. And they're convening in the Lincoln Institute, this version in Phoenix, about putting some resources and planning together for Delmar just north of this area. So that's kudos. Miriam Keller, who you got introduced before she became a City Planning Executive at the last meeting, has been taking Scott's helm at the terminal for the Zoom. And she's joined us as a City Planning Executive on all things sort of general planning. I'd say that, that today in making my quarterly commitments to the mayor's office, I brought up that we, for the Planning Commission and for the Preservation Board, are going to review all our procedures, the ordinances, and, and the idea is to come up with a briefing packet and a presentation that we would then use for the Planning Commission.
It's being tossed over the fence by those assholes.
Alderman Shay, Alderman Shay, Alderman Cohen.
Yeah, so very much we want to do that. We're going to formalize it by tire kicking where we are, then put it together so we can communicate it to our current members and our new members. And that's a commitment I've made to have happen in the next, I think that works out to some, well, I can measure it in days or weeks, but that's going to happen. We do, I will remind folks that we are down 13 people. We have 13 vacancies in our department still, and currently the staff of 17 with Miriam just on board. So it's kind of a dynamic time, and we appreciate all of your membership and the quizzing and questions and thoughts that we'll take, take, Zach will take. Some of it will go back to the zoning as Mary's team was on, on board too. So, thank you all.
Well, thank you, Don. And again, I'd never go by without recognizing your staff. We all know what it's like doing more with less because it's happening in all of our worlds of employment that we're doing more with less. So our more is, our more is there more. So we appreciate all the work. With that, I will entertain a motion to end the meeting unless there's any other call.
I'll move.
Second questioner, oh.
Bradley, second by Commissioner Young. With that, meeting is adjourned. Everybody have a good holiday, good and safe holiday. Again, a happy new year to all. Thank you very much for your time.
Good night, everyone.
Happy New Year. Good night.